Keep in touch with Pat.
Okay.
I'm going to broadcast now.
All right, it says, says we are broadcasting, so welcome. I guess we will, just want to make sure Jason isn't the attendees. No, looks like we're okay there. So, great. Well, we'll go ahead and call this meeting to order for June 1st, 2020. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States.
States and America.
And to the Republic. For which it stands.
Which stands one nation under God.
Indivisible.
Liberty, being a sister or a.
It's a little difficult when you're hearing everyone, but still good to do. Amy, do you want to call attendance, just so we know who is here for the record?
Yes, President Garrett. Vice President Trailer.
President.
Counselor Burke.
Here.
Counselor Choi.
Here.
Counselor Culp.
Here.
Counselor Melton.
He is here. He is, he's just on mute.
Here.
Okay, and Jason, our Counselor Plunkett.
Is, he is missing so far.
Okay.
And I hope for him, though. I expect him at some point. Okay, first up, we've got approval of the memorandum of the May 18th, 2020 regular meeting. Copy has been posted. Unless there's any discussion, I'll make a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
And who said second? If you can announce yourself, that will help Amy with the registration.
As Brad, I said second, and then Brian was right behind me.
Great, so Counsel Burke is a second. Amy, I see Counsel Plunkett has joined as well. He's just showing up under my name, so, but he is here now. Okay, do you want to do a roll call vote?
Okay, President Garrett.
Yes.
Vice President Trailer.
Yes.
Counselor Burke.
Yes.
Counselor Choi.
Yes.
Counselor Culp.
Yes.
Counselor Melton.
Yes.
And Counselor Plunkett.
Yes.
Very good. memorandum of the May 18th, 2020 regular town council meeting is approved by a vote of seven in favor, zero opposed. Amy, do we have any requests to speak that have come in via paper?
No, we do not.
If there are any attendees who would like to speak, please raise your hand. See, one, Amy, Mr. Triscari. You could promote him so that he can speak. Very good. Mr. Triscari, I think you've spoken before, but if you can give your name and address for the record, and then you have three minutes to speak, I will time you and give you a one-minute warning, just so that you're aware, at your convenience, and you currently show as mute right now. Can you hear me? We got you, Mr. Triscari.
Thank you. My name is Craig Triscari. I also have Barbara Triscari, 3270 Paddock Road. As of June 1st, 2020, Van Trust has still failed to run the eight-inch water line into Saratoga after November 2018 ordinance passing. Van Trust is still in violation. Van Trust lawyers stated a month ago, we had 17 people that could hook up for water, which was the number needed through the current Whitestown variance request to start running the line. Where is it? Why can't Zionsville and Whitestown leadership provide a basic timeline to the community? Last meeting, I addressed the exaggeration of what Van Trust lawyers stated about home value growth. I showed by my home local appraisal that the growth was not five or six percent in the last three years. It was actually 0.11% as they developed those, those industrial bombs on our area. Today, I'll address the well water in my rural Zionsville area. I will not repeat what the Van Trust lawyer said, because it was so ridiculous, it doesn't even warrant repeat. If the town wanted the truth, they should have asked DNR to brief what they know about the water supply and impact of this sort of development in Southern Perry Township. The fact is, the council has no interest in understanding the water issues or conditions in the rural community. We do not have wells that are clay holes, that are just pockets, that have no connection with other water flow into those wells. When Van Trust started building throughout Whitestown and Zionsville southern portion, community homes had problems. Speaking of my well, DNR measured my well in 2018, and I asked them to re-measure it again this, this year. I also know if my well runs dry, the homeowners can request DNR to investigate and see the cause. If you plan to buy a home and a homeowner in Zionsville, be cautious. The leadership doesn't abide by their comprehensive plans as written, nor do they care about your property or value. They can get 3% from industrial sites and only 1% from residential, which puts a target on your back. Zone buffering, industrial and residential in Zionsville means 12-foot buffer, six-foot fence, some trees, 50-75 meter separation, instead of mixed usage, housing, general business as a buffer. As your, as your rural comprehensive plan stated, homeowners on 421 and near the highway be lyria of the precedent set, not following zoning buffering. This council and the town leadership provides zero, currently zero value added to the greater community. Thank you. I'll address tax abatements given these, to this billion-dollar company during the remonstration when it comes up today, later tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Triscari. I don't know that the discussion today is a public matter, just so that you're aware. So I believe there'll be another opportunity to speak. Any other requests to speak, Amy, that you see?
I do not see any.
Okay, very good. We will then go on to old business, to which there is none. The first new business item we have here today is a consideration of an ordinance vacating a portion of a public right-of-way within the Zionsville corporate boundaries. This is a first reading, and this is a public hearing. It's ordinance number 2020-04. Mr. DeLong, I believe you are speaking. I'm not sure if the petitioners themselves will be speaking, but we'll start with you and go from there.
Thank you. Happy to start off. This petition was filed by a family at 713 West Hawthorne, which is the Morris family, and 640 West Sycamore Street, the Russell family. They're seeking to vacate a portion of a platted alley that is currently unimproved and not utilized as access to adjoining lots. The alley does contain access points that are utilized and paved, but those are off-site. This is a center portion of the east-west alley. This alley does function to provide utility access, both aerial and underground, and staff would support the vacation of the alley, subject to preservation of utility rights for, for the parties that utilize the alley. I believe Heather Willey, town or council attorney here, may have additional comments for you. But again, staff is supportive of the alley vacation. I believe you all have packets in front of you that, or with you, I should say, that have been distributed to illustrate the request that is being made.
Thank you, Wayne. Heather, anything to add to that?
Nothing really to add. We did make sure in the ordinance that there is a continuation of the rights to access the property for utilities, and we worked with Mr. Lance and Mr. DeLong to be able to ensure that that language was included. So we do have that in the ordinance before you.
Very good. Amy, I see that this is a public hearing. I do not have proof of publication. Is that something that you're able to show through this? Through the Zoom meeting? I'll open up the, the public meeting really quick, in case there's any member of the public that wants to speak on this specific matter.
Proof of public hearing.
So there's our proof of publication. I left my cattle back at the office, but we'll, we'll open up this as a, as a public hearing. If there's any member of the public that wants to speak on this specific topic, please raise your hand through the Zoom application, and we can hear you. Give it another second here. All right, I don't see, there's a, there's a hand raised. Can you promote Kathleen?
Yes.
Ms. Morris, the floor is yours for this public hearing. Hope, I believe you're on mute. If, if you come off mute, and if you can give your name and address for the record, and we can hear your statement. Ms. Morris, you're, you're still on mute, if you'd like to speak. Last chance. All right, Amy. Oh, there's a second. Wait, maybe, maybe you're here through the second one. Are you there, Ms. Morris?
Can, can you hear us?
Oh, yeah, we got you. If you can give your name, name and address for the record, please, and make your statement.
Hey, Steve Morris, 713 West Hawthorne. Appreciate the town council taking the time to consider the petition before us. You know, it's a, a basic land vacation of the alley, and did want to provide comment that we do have the support of the adjoining landowners, and that was also included in the packet. So looking forward to the town council's consideration, and appreciate everyone's time on this. Thank you.
Very good, Steve. I appreciate that comment. Amy, we can move them back to attendees. With that, I don't see any other hands raised. I will close the public hearing. If there's any questions here from counselors on what's before us, we can ask Wayne, or it sounds like the petitioner is also on the phone, if you needed to ask a question of them. All right. Seems pretty straightforward. If there are no questions, we can take a motion on this ordinance. And this is an introduction on first reading, so this will come in front of us again. Any motions on this?
Make a motion, Craig.
A motion for, to approve, Craig?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, very good. Is there a second on that?
Second.
A second for Vice President Trailer. Amy, if you can go through the roll call.
Okay, President Garrett.
Yes.
Vice President Trailer.
Yes.
Counselor Burke.
Yes.
Counselor Choi.
Yes.
Counselor Culp.
Yes.
Counselor Melton. Counselor Melton.
Yes.
And Counselor Plunkett.
Yes.
Ordinance number 2020-04 is introduced with a vote of seven in favor, zero opposed. This will then appear now on our next meeting, our morning meeting here in June. Okay, next we've got is a consideration of an ordinance to amend the town of Zionsville, Boone County, Indiana zoning map. This is Plan Commission Petition Number 2020-15-7. This is also ordinance 2020-05. Mr. DeLong, back to you again.
Thank you. Bringing to you this evening a petition that comes to you with a favorable recommendation from your Plan Commission related to your Creekside PUD. This particular project is certainly something that the town has been working on for several years now, and county, town council members who have, have some tenure may recall some previous conversations and rezoning petitions that have been discussed and subsequently approved. This petition is very similar to that previous process. The, by ordinance, if there's adjustments to the PUD, it can either be done by variance or by rezoning. The rezoning process is a bit more transparent and provides a bit more, bit more touchpoints for the public. So it certainly, we staff always leans towards the PUD rezoning process. In this particular case, the petition is seeking to adjust the PUD to embrace automobile racing teams as a permissible use. Simply put, when Creekside was first created, it did not anticipate being the home of, of an automobile racing team. Certainly, the zoning did not permit that. Certainly, this, this is an attempt to adjust both the zoning, as well as the development standards, to embrace that type of use. There's a, a listing of items that are being changed, or that have been supported by your Plan Commission, such as cleanup of definitions, as well as a creation of new sub-areas to provide for this type of use. And at the same time, we're taking advantage of this process to clean up as well some other items, such as the acreage of Creekside, where certain parcels have been sold off to adjacent, adjacent landowners for purposes of boundary, or creating additional AV. And the parcels that have been traded off or sold off have been unbuildable or unusable by, by the RDC. With that in mind, staff is supportive of the petition that's in front of you this evening, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Very good. Thank you, Wayne. Exciting to potentially see a race team here, if we decide to pass this here tonight. Any questions for Wayne on, on this matter around Creekside? All right. Easy enough. Any motions, then, on this matter that we'd like to introduce?
I would make a motion to approve.
First from Vice President Trailer.
Okay, Brad.
There's a second from Counsel Burke. Amy, you know the drill.
Okay, President Garrett.
Yes.
Vice President Trailer.
Yes.
Counselor Burke.
Yes.
Counselor Choi.
Yes.
Counselor Culp.
Yes.
Counselor Melton.
Yes.
And Counselor Plunkett.
Yes.
Thank you.
Good. Ordinance number 2020-05 is adopted with a vote of seven in favor, zero opposed. Amy, can you promote Matt Price into the meeting as a presenter while I introduce this next topic? I believe he'll be discussing it for us. This is Topic C. This is for a resolution declaring an economic revitalization area and approving an application for real property tax abatement. This is in relation to the Van Trust Real Estate LLC. This is Resolution Number 2020-07. Mr. Price, I see you there. The floor is yours.
Thank you very much. Mr. President, members of the council, for the record. My name is Matt Price. I'm an attorney with Dentons, and I'm here tonight representing Van Trust. With me via Zoom connection is Rafe Webster, project manager relating to this project. And then, just for the record, I have also been texting with Jeff Jacob, who you may recall is representing the certain owners of the properties within the Saratoga subdivision. And he is standing by as well, should there be any questions pertaining that may, they fall within his experience as well. What we have tonight before you is a declaratory resolution, which is the initial step with regard to granting a tax abatement. As the president observed earlier in the meeting, this is not a public hearing. There is a public hearing at a subsequent step following public notice, which is preliminary to what's called a confirmatory resolution. So this is just the initial step that would actually permit the public hearing to go forward at a subsequent meeting, as determined by the council. With regard to the substance of the proposal, let me describe just a little bit of detail pertaining to it to refresh your recollections from last month, when we received the unanimous approval of the rezoning ordinance. The project consists of two buildings, one 780,000 square feet, a little over, and one 390, 399,000 square feet, for an estimated total investment in vertical improvements of real property of approximately $48 million. To give you some comparison, the property that we're seeking to pursue this project upon has a current assessed value today of around $283,000, and pays approximately $2,899 per year in property taxes. With our proposal, after the, the abatement is applied, the project would pay over $3.2 million in property taxes pertaining to real property alone over the next 10 years. To give you an idea of the scale of the investment, I like to do some comparisons. It's approximately three times the total assessed valuation of the Lids Building, a little over two times the total assessed valuation of both sides of Main Street, from roughly the jewelry store on the north, all the way south to the old National Bank. I did, my calculation didn't go south of the old National Bank, but I could do that at some point as well. So it is a very sizable scale and a significant contribution to our local tax base. One thing I will mention relative to the project is this request does not seek to abate any personal property. One of the things that I think the town will enjoy as these projects mature, and as they're occupied by tenants, is that you will see additional and substantial personal property investments go inside these buildings. And to give you an idea, those, those improvements inside buildings can be tens of millions of additional dollars inside those buildings that are associated with the individual uses that may arrive at one or more of these buildings. So I say that because what this really does is provide a very sizable investment in terms of the initial, a real property investment. But what it's also going to do is attract significant personal property investment. So it's a great precursor to what I think is going to follow in the very near term. We, I want to, a feature of this, although it's not something that we're seeking approval for tonight, but it's a very, it's a unique feature in my experience to Zionsville, is that we have tendered a form of tax abatement agreement, which, what it does is it prevents the project owner from challenging the assessed valuation of the property, in, meaning that so long as the assessed valuation correctly reflects the, the, as long as there's not a mistake in the assessment, meaning a typo or something of that nature, that the intent is that the, there will be no challenge to the AV. So unlike situations that the county has experienced in other properties, like with the Meyer Store, for example, you may have followed, we have eliminated any challenge to the value of the improvement, so that the town is assured of receiving the investment that is being incentivized here. I should add, and this is a, something that I'm happy to have further discussion about tonight, or, or at the public hearing, as the council determines is appropriate. One of the things that is kind of ingrained with regard to logistics facilities is that Central Indiana offers what is called, or most jurisdictions in Central Indiana offer this standard abatement. And so it becomes really part and parcel with having a competitive project, or really having any project at all, to, to offer this type of a standard abatement, which, which it's called standard, because it kind of follows the, the declining abatement amount over a 10-year period. Roughly equates to a 50% abatement over 10 years. And so there's reasons why it is standard and so ingrained in the marketplace, and those have to do with the nature of these developments and the type of, types of properties that they occupy, the scale of them, et cetera. But suffice to say that in order to have a project, the abase, the abatement needs to be part of the overall approved proposal. With that, I guess I would add just one other thing, and I apologize, it's maybe a little outside of the scope of tonight, but I feel, I feel, I guess, moved to say something about this, having, having also listened to the May 18th council meeting. But I feel very differently about the council's treatment of rezonings generally. This project has extraordinary buffering that was negotiated with the neighbors who were represented by council. It involves, as you know from the last meeting we had on the rezoning, an extraordinary, and I think unprecedented, commitment to new public infrastructure to serve an adjoining subdivision. And I believe the Plan Commission and the Town Council correctly applied not only the comprehensive plan, but all five criteria to this rezoning, to arrive at something that reflects the current conditions and existing land use pattern, but also is respectful of the adjoining property owners. And with regard to property values, my, my statements at the, at the, at the rezoning meeting have been impugned two times in a row now. And the first time I decided to remain silent, I just don't feel like I can be silent tonight. I, I can tell you that when I represented to the council that the assessed valuations of the Saratoga properties were increasing, I did so looking at the data published by Boone County. And strikingly, I went back and checked it tonight, because I anticipated the comments, or at least some of the comments I heard. There have been four separate transactions from May of 2019, which is after this project was approved, specifically on May 19th, September 19th, December 19th, and January of this year, where properties were either sold at $60,000, $32,000, and $80,000 above their previous assessed valuation, all since this project Phase 1, which neighbors this, the Saratoga Development, was approved. In addition to that, there was a new home built in that subdivision in the summer of 2019. There has been astonishing amount of new and increased investment in the Saratoga subdivision since this project was approved. And I, so when I represented to the council, the data about, that I, the best data that's available in the public records that reflects property values, that's where I'm getting that. And so if there is other data that someone would like to present in writing that has some basis in reality, then I'm all ears, and I'd love to hear it. But I frankly am no longer willing to have my representations tarnished, or my, 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 my own personal reputation tarnished by just random comments that are not supported by fact. And so respectfully, I would request your approval of the declaratory resolution tonight. I would welcome the opportunity to answer your questions, and I would sincerely look forward to a public hearing on this matter at a time you deem appropriate. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Price. Counselors, any, any questions for Mr. Price? Or, as you mentioned, there's also the project manager, as well as the lawyer representing the owners in Saratoga here that we've been promoting. If you have a question for either of them as well.
I more have a question for our council, as far as just the, the process. And you just kind of line out, I know that this isn't the, the final vote. We have another vote with a public hearing. Can you kind of explain the difference between what's going on tonight versus what will happen then?
Yeah, so one of the things you're doing in this declaratory resolution is setting up an economic revitalization area, which is really the first step when you're offering those tax abatements that are being requested by Van Trust. So the declaratory resolution is really that first part in the process. The petitioner has already submitted statements and economic benefit when they submitted their information to the Plan Commission, which you all reviewed and approved at the last meeting. As Mr. Price indicated, we shared with the members of the council the draft agreement, which you're not approving this evening. It is really simply for your information to see what that agreement may look like, and, you know, to be able to allow the public to weigh in as well on the terms of the proposed agreement. So when you, when you see that, it's really an opportunity, as Mr. Price indicated, to see that the, the commitment of the petitioner is to really, you know, commit to some of the details that are outlined in that agreement, as well as to the length of the abatement. And so what we're really doing tonight is you're taking the first step to say, yes, you know, we are interested in granting you this abatement. We're interested in hearing from the members of the town and our constituents about what they think as part of the public hearing process, which will be the next step. It'll give remonstrators the opportunity to come as part of that process and share any, you know, concerns they may have, as well as anyone that wants to come and support the project, as well as has an opportunity to speak at that hearing. So not limited to only those that have concerns, but there may be others that wish to support the request as well. And then it will come back to you for a confirmatory resolution, which is really the final step in the process. That's when you're really agreeing to providing the actual abatement, as well as, you know, any details that would be contained in the, you know, final agreement that's been provided to you as well. Without this step, you can't really get to the public hearing phase, I guess, as the. Without this step, you can't really get to the public hearing phase, I guess, is the important point. And so it's, you know, you're, you've got a petitioner who's made the request and you have not really, you don't really have a mechanism in the statute to allow the public to weigh in. You are making a statement of interest and you are making some additional commitments to the petitioner that you're willing to take input from the public on their request. But, you know, at the same point, you do have the opportunity through the confirmatory resolution to, to make a decision otherwise if once that input's been had, if, you know, if there's overwhelming concern, you'll have that additional step to weigh back in officially.
Thank you.
I've sort of going into this, going back to the first Van Trust building, I was always a little skeptical of these abatements, I guess, just for, for other counselors to, to understand that I sort of went through a pretty exhaustive process of talking with other commercial builders, talking with commercial real estate agents, trying to figure out, you know, is, is this something that is just a giveaway? Or is this something that's necessary? And, and I sort of, I came to the conclusion, kind of what Mr. Price said today, that it is, it, it may not be the fairest, but it puts us in the running with all the other projects. And you don't want to be the weird one-off project that has some sort of different abatement schedule that's hard to calculate. It's just, you know, sort of the, the market, I guess, sets what it is. And so, you know, if you look at what happened in Whitestown today, you know, our friends and neighbors over there, you know, they were, I'm sure thrilled, they landed a fifty five million dollar Coca-Cola distribution center. And so, you know, I'm appreciative of these kinds of projects. And I appreciate, you know, Van Trust stepping up, you know, at the request on that dark box appeal and waving that right, again, assuming everything is correct. So I know we're not talking about the specifics of the abatement today, we're just getting it started. But it, it seems market for, for what the communities are doing. And we've got to be market to attract our own base and that kind of type of tax assessment, so.
Some other thing I'd say to the council is you may remember that a couple of years ago, those of some of you are new, the council very specifically asked petitioners to begin to include these requests early as part of their plans to the Plan Commission to give the most transparency about the requests that they would be making at a later date. And that was really something that council took a lot of leadership on, indicating that they wanted to put the public on notice very early on in the process so that people were educated to all of the different things that would make up a particular development deal. And so we're, you know, we're following a lot of that process now to make sure that the council is participating earlier as well in the process, and not just the redevelopment commission.
That's fair. Any questions from any other counselors?
Josh, I have a couple of questions. Thank you. Appreciate the process and the timeline, as explained, Heather. I guess this might be for Matt. The, the parcel that Van Trust owns next to this one, is there, does it have the exact same standard abatement applied?
It does.
And that was applied in twenty eighteen?
It was actually approved in, I apologize, I think it was approved in the beginning of nineteen.
Okay.
Josh may be able to correct me on that.
The other question I just had was looking at the application and your previous comments. And I understand the current assessed value and, and value to the town of about, what'd you say, twenty eight hundred dollars. You had an, an assessed value of forty eight million, potentially, not even including personal property. But when we heard a couple, I guess, last month and approved the zoning change, Van Trust made it sound like they weren't quite sure exactly what was going to go into that particular parcel. And it sounded like it might even surprise me that it might sit vacant longer than I thought. Where, what are they, how are they arriving at forty eight million dollar assessment? Because even a month ago, we weren't quite sure what was going in there.
I apologize, we left, we left you that impression on, we, I think it is fair to say that we're not sure what the end user will put in there. But our plans are pretty well set as far as the buildings themselves. And so we can say with a great deal of confidence that the physical improvements will, frankly, they'll, they'll cost and be assessed at approximately forty eight million dollars. That's based on our, what our investment is going to be. So I think the, what we're not, what we cannot commit to today is, for example, is it Coca-Cola? Is it Amerigen Pharmaceuticals? Who the end user may be, and that may be what we, what we mentioned at the, at the council meeting.
Okay. And I may have, I may have completely misunderstood, but.
No, that's okay.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Yep.
Counselor Burke, any other questions? You got it? All right. Unless there's any other questions, I would take a motion on this declaratory resolution.
I'll make a motion. Craig Melton?
And is that a motion to approve?
A motion to approve the starting of the, the abatement process.
We've got a first, Counsel Melton. The second, Counsel Plunkett. Very good. Second, Counsel Plunkett. Amy, do you want to do your thing? You're on mute, Amy. Nope, he went right into mute again. You're off mute for like a millisecond. There we go.
Now, President Garrett?
Yes.
Vice President Trailer?
Yes.
Counselor Burke?
Yes.
Counselor Choi?
Yes.
Counselor Culp?
Yes.
Counselor Melton?
Yes.
Counselor Plunkett?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Amy. Resolution number two zero, two zero, dash, zero, seven passes with a vote of seven in favor, zero opposed. Look forward to seeing you on this journey, Mr. Price. We're on other matters. Any counselors have any other matters to discuss today? All right. We'll go to the approval of claims, but usually we just approve these. But Mr. Delong, I believe there is a unique claim in here related to something around Boone EDC. Do you mind just going over there real quick, just so the counselors are aware of what is in claims for this, this approval?
I'm happy to, to speak to this particular item. In your claims, one of them is a twenty five thousand dollar claim payable to the Boone Economic Development Commission. This check, if it, if it's funded this evening, represents the first of two contributions the town is making to the Boone EDC microloan fund, what we're calling locally the Zionsville Resiliency Fund. It is a direct action item that the town is moving forward with specifically to help small businesses. There are thirty million small businesses in this country. Last we checked, maybe four point two million had received some sort of assistance. We're saying, of course, like everybody would say, more needs to be done, and this is the first of those steps. And so what this represents is, is some funding that would be directed to the Boone EDC. It would be administered by the Boone EDC, but the town of Zionsville would have a seat at the table, if you will, in the decision-making process. And certainly, these funds would be facilitated in the form of a loan to small businesses in Zionsville that seek this type of funding. And it's a revolving loan, so this, these dollars can come back. Another part of this conversation, and this, and this will happen Thursday of this week, is the redevelopment commission will be discussing, making a contribution as well to Boone EDC. It is microloan funds that are already earmarked and allocated. This has a bit of a different touch to it in that the Boone EDC would be vetting the request. Again, the town would be heavily involved. But the final stop in that particular request would be back to your community development corporation due to some logistical and legal requirements. All that said, exciting things for the town to be embarking on. I certainly just thank you, President Garrett, for the opportunity to give some brief color to this conversation. And certainly, we look to have the, the second part of it later on this week with redevelopment commission.
Wayne, before we have a motion on claims, any questions on what Wayne talked about there or any other thing that was in claims?
Yeah, real quick, Wayne. So this is different than the contribution that we give to support the Boone EDC on an annual basis, correct?
That is correct.
And then who will be, I guess, making the decision on how that money is distributed? Will that be the Boone EDC Board?
There's a separate microloan committee within the Boone EDC, and the town of Zionsville will be a member of that deciding body.
Okay. I was just wondering, because I'm on that with the mayor, the Boone EDC Board, and I just wanted to make sure if that's something the mayor and I will be working on in that, in that committee, or how's that work?
I believe there's a separate microloan committee.
Okay. All right. Thanks.
Very good. Thanks, Counsel Culp. Assuming there are no other comments, I will make a motion to approve claims.
I will second.
Second from Counsel Culp. Amy, almost there?
Okay. President Garrett?
Yes.
Vice President Trailer?
Yes.
Counselor Burke?
Yes.
Counselor Choi?
Yes.
Counselor Culp?
Yes.
Counselor Melton?
Yes.
Counselor Plunkett?
Yes.
Thank you.
Very good. Claims are approved by a vote of seven in favor, zero opposed. I will then make a motion to adjourn.
Okay.
Second for Vice President Trailer.
Okay. President Garrett?
Yes.
Vice President Trailer?
Yes.
Counselor Burke?
Yes.
Counselor Choi?
Yes.
Counselor Culp?
Yes.
Counselor Melton?
Yes.
Counselor Plunkett?
Yes.
Very good. We are adjourned by a vote of seven in favor, zero opposed. The next fairer town council meeting is scheduled for Monday, June fifteenth, twenty twenty, at seven thirty AM. This will be an electronic meeting. Members of the public shall have the right to attend this public meeting via Zoom link that will be provided in the meeting notice. This will also be broadcast and archived on YouTube. Thanks, counselors. Appreciate it. Have a good rest of the week.
Excellent.
Take care. Good night.
Good night.